We just make a start. It is just after six o'clock. After we make a start. Yeah, good evening. Welcome to today's public meeting. It is open to the public and a warm welcome. It's a really pleasant evening. We've not had many of those over the last week, I suppose. Glad to see you all here. Hopefully, we can finish by eight o'clock and make the most of the rest of the evening. Thank you very much. My name's councillor Allen Hooper and I'm the chair of this local area committee, the North Committee. Before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves, I will hand over the committee to the committee clerk, Philippa, to read out the housekeeping arrangements. Thank you, Philippa.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the council staff present. The assembly point is at the front doors, through the car park and underneath the nursery. The toilet facilities are situated through these doors, disabled on the left, and then the next one is the ladies', and then the next one is the men's'. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we do have hearing loops available. If you'd like to use one, please let us know. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Philippa. Please can I ask members to introduce themselves, please, starting with Richard?
Good evening. My name is Richard Williams. I'm a councillor for Stanington Ward.
Good evening. My name's Alan Woodcock. I'm councillor for East Ecclesfield Ward.
Good evening. I'm Anne Whitercombe. I'm councillor for West Ecclesfield Ward.
Councillor Mike Levy, councillor for West Ecclesfield Ward.
Good evening. Councillor Vicky Priestley, deputy chair and Stanington Ward councillor.
Hello, I'm Craig Gamblekey. I'm councillor for East Ecclesfield Ward.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Julie Grokot, councillor for Stockbridge and Dunward.
Evening, everyone. I'm Liu Xinchen, councillor for Stockbridge and Dunward.
Hello, everybody. I'm Janet Riddler, also councillor for-
Action Plan and Proposed Spending. In this, the area man will first give a presentation, there will be then a discussion debate, and the members of the committee will be asked to agree the recommendations of the report. We will then have a update on the Towns Fund, Stockford Town Fund from Amanda, and then we will have a sort of a twenty-minute breakout, thirty-minute breakout, to look at local issues and certainly for people from Stockbridge, look at the Stockbridge Towns Fund. When we gather together, we'll have a brief report from what was gathered from the breakouts, and then we will go on to public questions and petitions. Thank you very much. Deal now with apologies for our absence, please.
We have apologies from councillor Penny Baker.
The next agenda item is exclusions of the press and public. I don't believe we have any items on this agenda that require exclusion. Now move on to agenda item number five, which is minutes of the previous meetings. We have two meetings that we need to look at the minutes and agree. Thank you. Julie?
Could I just declare an interest, please, Chair, on item eight, Stockbridge Towns Fund? I am a member of the Towns Fund Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie noted. Greatly, on to introduce yourself quickly.
Councillor Riddler, if you could set this for me.
Thank you. So we'll move on to minutes of the previous meeting. As I said, we have two lots of minutes to go through. The first being the meetings of the ninth of March, which was held at the Miners' Welfare at High Green. We can go through councillors page by page. So page one, which is page nine on the agenda. Page ten. Page thirteen contains the public questions and petitions. We had a question regarding mortemly close. I'd like to deal with that when we come to the public questions and petitions later on, Adam. That's fine, and we can deal with-
We will certainly be on time. Yeah, I need to get away to you. Thank you. Instead of ringing it up, we'll look and bring it in with your question tonight. Thank you.
Page fourteen.
Page fourteen, just to say we have had a written answer to the question that Mr Bilton raised, which has been shared with him and which will be included in the minutes from this meeting.
Thank you. And then page fifteen. Is there any issues which councillors need to or require to raise? If not, can we agree those minutes, please? Show hands. Thank you. Moving on to the next set of minutes, which was the minutes of the eighteenth of May, which was held on the day of the first meeting of the full council. The meeting was to elect a chair and deputy chair for the coming year, and the councillors of this LAC committee resolved in electing myself as chair and councillor Vicky Priestley as vice chair. Could just agree those as formally, please? Thank you. We'll now move on to agenda item number six, which is the Local Area Committee Action Plan, which will be followed by the Local Area Committee Budget Report. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Chair. So just to explain to members of the public, what we're going to do is, if we could have a PowerPoint up, please, going to take these sort of two items together, both to give you a bit of a sense of what your area committee and the staff team have been doing, and then some of the things that we're proposing in terms of initial use of some of the area committee budget. So within your papers, from page nineteen, you've got an action plan. I don't propose to go through that blow by blow, but you've got it within your person and you can come back to us at any point if you would like to ask more details of that. What I'd like you to do, what I'd like to do is take you through some of what the committee's been doing and some of what the committee proposes to do next, and then there'll be an opportunity for questions after that. So hopefully, if I, what am I pointing this towards to you? Oh, great, thank you. So the joy of technology. So just to give you a little bit of context, really, in terms of your area committee, we came into being as a structure last May in terms of area working, in terms of working with your councillors to address local issues. And what we did in September and October of last year is we did some initial consultation to talk to as many people as we could across the area. Some of that was people doing an online survey, some of that was talking to people in person in order to say to people, what are your big issues? And the three areas that we really kind of honed in on was around highways and transport issues, around the environment and around the wider issue of community life. So those are the three areas that we will be looking to focus on in terms of LAC projects. That's just to give a little bit of context. But we wanted to, if you guys can move it on, because I think I'm really going to be pressing the wrong thing or it's not working. So if you can do the next slide, that would be great. Okay, thank you. So want to give you a bit of a flavour of what we have been doing, because we're very conscious, if you've come to some of these meetings, that it's very important that we ask you about what you think, but at a certain point in time, you're probably also saying to us, that's great, what are you actually doing? So this is a bit of a flavour of some of the things that we have been doing and a kind of business as usual. So each year, each of your councillors has what we call a ward pot. So this is an amount of funding for very local projects. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about some of the things that have been happening through the ward pot. So on the picture slide, you had at the bottom, so that's Stockbridge High Street, and so Stockbridge in Bloom, some of you may know, folks from the community, that's one of the projects that's been supported. And then the picture at the top is what's called the Joining Old and Young Project in Ecclesfield, which brings together young people and older people to do projects together. And there was some funding for some kitchen equipment for them. So thank you for going to the next slide. So just to give you a bit of a sense of the flavour of the different sorts of things that we do there, there's activities for older people, there's activities for younger people, so there was a theatre project in this area, there was a boxing club, the food bank in Stanington has been supported, the food growing project up at Inman has been supported. And then sometimes groups just need very practical running costs. So Valley React, we supported them locally with their broadband costs, and other people have just said, can you support us with room hire costs? So very practical things that have happened across the area to support local projects. If we go on to the next slide, this year again, we will have a ward pot for each area, and this is particularly for local projects and local community groups. So if you have a project, there's some details there, but please come and speak to us as a team or come and speak to any of your councillors if you've got a project that you think would benefit from a little bit of funding. So I was talking to a colleague today who was mentioning a venue where they said, we'd love to do some work with young families, we've seen a community room, but we think it needs a bit of tidying up, so that that'd be a place where you'd be happy to run activities. And we said, well, that may be the perfect sort of thing that we can fund through the ward pot. So that's one of the practical things that your area committee and your local councillors have been doing. For moving to the next slide, there's some pictures here of some Jubilee projects. So we were given six thousand pounds in order to fund some of the activities that people were planning to do in the area. So we've got the Don District Scouts there at the top waving flags, we put a project where we brought students from Ecclesfield School to work with some of the older people in their areas, lots of community fun days, tea dances, people having the excuse to dress as the Queen, all that sort of stuff. But we were able to fund some really good projects for people to celebrate the Jubilee. Thank you. So next slide, please. So I want to take you on then to talk about the area committee budget for this year. So we have a hundred thousand pounds for projects that support some of those things that came out of the plan, where we're talking about community life, environment and transport and highways. And there are two specific highways, two specific projects that I'm bringing tonight to ask the area committee to support. The first of which is having a parks improvement budget, where we can have better parks facilities across the area. We've looked at some sites where we think they need bringing up to a higher standard, where they're a bit tired, and so we're proposing that budget and then to go away and look at a bit more detail of exactly where that's invested. We're particularly hoping that we can work in partnership with this budget with the town and parish councils, with other groups, we've got a friends group here tonight, and looking about how we can work in partnership to actually be able to do more than the committee can fund by itself, particularly thinking on a kind of initial basis about Grennyside Park, about Fox Glen, Woodroyd Road, that some people will know locally, and about improving the Wadley Park Village football area, which I'm reliably informed is a bit of a bog for a number of months a year, but there's a proposal that we look to invest in some of those sites, working alongside partners to see if they can add some funding to that. And the other project that we're recommending tonight is to develop a youth hub in High Green. So at the moment, across the four wards of the North Area Committee, we only have one youth base, that's actually here in Stockbridge up the hill. It's great that we've got that, but we would like to see more places where young people can go and engage in what we'd call open access activities, that you can just turn up. So our general sense in the North is there's areas of young people's activity which is great. If you want to play a team sport, if you want to join the Scouts, that's great. If you, you're not really sure what you want to do, but you'd like to gather with other young people and try things out, there's not a lot of that going on. So in addition to the base that we've got here in Stockbridge, we'd like to develop one in High Green. So we're proposing funding to do that and very conscious that we'd also like to see some sort of facility in Stanington Ward, which hopefully we can look at further in time. So they're the two specific areas of funding that I'm recommending for the committee tonight. Just to finish the budget report, if we go on to the final slide, we are continuing to explore a number of other areas. We have a delegation from our first meeting to allow us not to have to wait to a public meeting to take all our decisions, where funding of up to five thousand pounds for smaller projects can be agreed. And my sense in the North is that there are maybe, rather than lots of very big projects, a number of smaller things happening in local communities that we can support. And there's a number of areas where we're looking to explore more, things like, can we get a guide, an information guide for the different things that happen in the area, particularly in this area? Can we do some more work around digital inclusion? We're thinking a lot about school safety, we're thinking about things like the opportunity to have a sort of car share scheme. So there's lots of areas there that we want to explore a bit further. Anything that is agreed because it's at that lower level of funding, that information will be brought back to the next public meeting, so everyone's aware of what's happening. And if there's areas that we've developed further, so that we're ready to suggest, recommend further projects, then that will happen at our October meeting. So Chair, what I'd like to recommend is funding for those two initial areas around the High Green Youth Hub and around having a parks improvement budget.
Thank you, Dave. Does any councillors want to comment on that, on the proposal to allocate the budget?
Just, just a technical thing without boring everybody, I'm just wondering if ward councillors needed to have declared an interest in items that are on the agenda that are actually in their ward would be helpful, but certainly to say in relation to the Woodroyd Park, the local councillors' offices and the Parks Department, we've had some meetings there and the idea behind the bid is to make sure that in September, when the children are back at school, that we engage with local schoolchildren, that we make sure that we talk to them about the items that they want to see in their park, and we make it as user-friendly for the children as we possibly can and something that they can take some ownership in. We were very grateful we had town councillors there, including Mark, who's sat at the front here, who was the deputy mayor of the town. At the town council meeting last night, the night before, subject to ratification by the full town council next week, they're going to give two and a half thousand pounds towards projects working in partnership with the city council and with the like, so I think that's, you know, really good news. So it's just to make, you know, make people aware that we are, we are doing a lot of work, you know, within the community to make sure that what we deliver is actually what the young people in the area want. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks. Yeah, just one moment. Thank you, Julie. We'll take that on board and ask the question, but I think all councillors are involved with local projects, and I think, you know, we're okay, but we will check that if we do need to declare interest on that, because we're all beavering away with casework and meeting friends groups all the time. We'll be declaring every interest that we've got, I think, yeah. But on the safe side, thank you very much. Yeah. I think if councillors can get nearer to the mic, or can we turn the volume up? Yeah, okay, thank you. Speaking to the mic. Okay. Do you just want to have a little summary of that, Julie? Get close to the mic.
Apologies. It was just to reassure people that actually, as local councillors, we've been working with the town council, the town council have agreed, subject to ratification, which is important that they do that, they will donate two and a half thousand pounds to the Woodroyd Park project, and that in September, we will be doing work with the local schoolchildren to make sure that the improvements that we make in the park are actually things that the children want to see and will enjoy in there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Julia. I think for all the councillors and the town and the parish councils, parks are very important, and I think we realised that during the Covid, how important they are for people to get in and out of meetings. So whatever we can do, certainly together and through the Local Area Committee, will be most welcome. Have any other councillors, any, yeah? Mike, please.
Thanks, Chair. I'd just like to recall thanks to High Green Development Trust for coming forward and providing the space for us to operate youth services in North of the city. We've been devoid of this for many, many years, and it's about time that we can finally get something moving in through the LAC funding, and we can get it on its way. We've got two of the 10% most deprived estates in High Green, one of them being Angram Bank, near the school road and Wall Road, and it's good that we can get young people who need a focus into a youth service provision in High Green Development Trust. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any more for councillors?
Yes, please, Chair. Yeah? Just the document references digital inclusion events, and we've been doing a lot of work locally to do a pop-up digital inclusion event at the library. So we're planning to work out the detail of that soon, but we're hoping to do that in September, and that will be an opportunity to, for people to come along and learn basic digital skills, or indeed whatever digital skills they want to learn. So we'll hopefully have people with relevant expertise there, and that will be an accessible location by which people can come along and learn digital skills, because that's certainly something that we've picked up from a lot of people, that people want digital training to be more accessible and more proactive, and so that's what we're trying to do there. Thanks, Chair.
Any more? Does anyone, member of the public want to comment on item twelve? Do the friends of Grennyside Park want to comment on the park? No? Okay. Okay. So could you use the mic and then everyone can hear? Now, the lady down here is finding it very difficult to hear as well, still. Yeah, please. Introduce yourself first, thank you.
Right, I'm Mark Whithercombe.
Right, I'm Mark Witteker. I'm town councillor for Deepcar and deputy mayor of Stocksbridge. I just wanted to add to the Fox Glen, Woodroyd Park thing that there's a lot of activity started now, pulling a Friends Of group together. There's been a very large response and I'm communicating with a lot of people and very shortly, we'll be holding a public meeting at the town hall here in Stocksbridge for anyone who's interested to come along to that. And I really think the more the community gets behind this and comes along to the meeting, the better chance we have of getting the right sort of equipment and raising other funds than are just available here. I think there are a lot more areas of funding that could be explored and we'll do this through the Friends Of group and a public meeting will be announced shortly. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Do you want to come in? Yeah. Just come to the mic, please. Just introduce yourself, please, Laura.
I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Laura Walker and I just felt that I should introduce myself and say that the reason I'm here is because we've also recently set up a Friends of Grennyside Park, because we feel that Grennyside is in need of renovation in terms of new playground equipment. And we will also soon be approaching members of the people of Grennyside to ask them their views about the current park and what they'd like to see in a new park as well. So once again, just wanted to say hello and that we're here and watch this space really, so thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else want to come in? I think it's down then to approve the plan, is it?
Yeah, if members are happy to approve those two funding proposals.
Could we have a show of hands, please? Thank you. Thank you very much, councillors. Thank you. Over to you again. Yeah.
You can use that if it works for you, otherwise. You might be. There you go, might work for you. Might have not, more successfully.
I'm the communications officer for the Stocksbridge Towns Fund. Can everybody hear me all right? So I've been in post for nearly a year now. Lost the slideshow again. I've been in post for nearly a year now, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of background as to how we've got to where we are with the towns fund, what comes next and what the projects are really. So apologies for those councillors and people that I know have engaged in towns fund projects and will know some of this, but I wanted to make sure we were doing something that people that obviously don't necessarily know the background. So 2019, the government announced a towns fund pot of £3.4 billion and that 101 towns could bid for that money. Stocksbridge was on the list. This was at the back end of 2019. And the local authority, Sheffield City Council, was the responsible authority and we had to set up a towns fund board. So we've got two of our board members here this evening, one is councillor Grokut and the other is Chris Bell at the back of the room there. So we formed a board in, early in 2020 and started doing some engagement about what should be in the bid, what did people in Stocksbridge want to see in the towns fund bid. As we all know, what happened in March 2020, we had a national lockdown, so unfortunately that engagement really had to go online and in the local newspaper. So we were a little bit hampered in terms of having those conversations with the public, so we quickly switched to an online format and an online format in terms of having meetings. And we formed a bid and spoke to people about what they wanted to see for Stocksbridge. There were really three key priorities that people told us they were concerned about in Stocksbridge. If you know Stocksbridge well, which I know a lot of you do, you'll not be surprised that the High Street was a major concern. We had a massive investment in Stocksbridge in 2016 with the Fox Valley Development and the High Street, Manchester Road, the traditional shopping street has very much got left behind. And people really came forward with that in our consultation, that they wanted to see investment in the High Street. That was one of the key themes that they asked the towns fund board to look at. Developing skills in education, which those of you who have lived in Stocksbridge a lot of years will remember, we used to have a further education college in Stocksbridge on the current co-op site. And really post-16, that there is no education here now, there is no opportunities for people to learn in their own community, I should say. So that was something that came through as a theme as well. And looking at the sporting and wellbeing and trails and really the opportunity to build on Stocksbridge with the outdoor city label. You know, we're in the northern side of the city here. We've got, I think, the best aspect to the open countryside and a great opportunity to build on that. So these were themes. So from these themes that came through the consultation, we had to build a bid, the towns fund board had to build a bid. I've just put this slide in because it very much shows the projects scattered across Stocksbridge. We are quite focused on the High Street, as you'll see, there's quite a lot. But if you look up at Langsit Dam there, that's where the Trails project is, there's a lot of work there linking up and making those trails around the dam a lot better. And we're also working on trails down at Moore Hall, which I'll come on to in a second. But I just think it's interesting to see the pattern of where the projects are, they're not just focused on the High Street, although that is obviously one of the key themes. So just looking at regenerating the High Street, that lovely visual of that building there, that's what we would like to develop on the current library site and take a little bit more land. So this is what we call the library and community hub building. I've been talking to some students at Stocksbridge High School today. We're trying to engage the local schoolchildren in coming up with a better name than the library and community hub building for us. And, you know, we really want to engage the younger community in that, because I think they're going to be one of the beneficiaries of this building. So as well as a library, which we'd like to put onto the ground floor, we're going to have community space, again, on the ground floor, flexible community space, which can be used for lots of different groups and possibly even performances. And then on the upper floors, we'd like to put some high quality office space. I think there's a real opportunity in Stocksbridge here to build on its position and its good links with motorway and good quality office space. All the office space that's available in Stocksbridge at the moment, either at Fox Valley or at the town hall, is currently let and it is proving to be quite a popular place for people to locate the businesses. We're also looking at a placemaking project. The second phase of consultation we did was a roadshow. We went to four locations in the town. We wanted to really overcome that issue that we'd had in Covid and get right out into the community. And we went to four locations in the town and one of the things that people told us was great to do this nice new building, really welcoming of the regeneration on the High Street, but the precinct at that stage wasn't really getting any attention and was still, to be fair, not going to look great. So we're going to have this new paving, we're going to have this lovely new building at the other end of the High Street, Fox Valley, but what was in the middle still needed some TLC. So the towns fund board really looked at that and did some more engagement work with local businesses. And we're now looking at a shopfront grant scheme, which would mean businesses could access a grant and make their shopfronts basically look, you know, this is what businesses here deserve, and make their shopfronts look nicer in line with everything else that's happening, so everything gets lifted. There's also a project to better connect the car parks in different areas of the town and a community transport project. It's not one of the most costly projects, but it is one of the ones that people always want to talk to us about. You know, Stocksbridge is a long linear town with a lot of elderly people living on the hillside and, you know, maybe only being able to get a bus every two hours and having to climb there, shopping trips around the next bus. So we're looking at a community transport project which would, you know, do a loop around Stocksbridge throughout the day and bring people down to the doctors, to the shops, to the facilities that they want to use. And I think that's going to be a really important project and hopefully one that the towns fund board will potentially be able to deliver quite early, because it's hopefully not a complicated one. Sorry, that was just really a plan. So the red, the red box there just shows that where the new building would go and the yellow is the extent of what we call placemaking projects. Skills in education, so it is one of the things that the government asked us to look at in putting forward a bid. And it's something that, again, through the consultation, came out very strongly that people would like to see some educational provision back in Stocksbridge. So we're working with Northern College to deliver some courses in the new hub building. So the building that will house the library and the officers will also have two dedicated classrooms that Northern College and potentially other providers can come and use and deliver learning. And we're doing some survey work, I don't know if anybody's done the online survey for me, if you have, thank you. We're doing some survey work to find out what kind of courses people would like to see. And as Louis said earlier, digital exclusion, that's coming through very strongly as a theme and that's something that Northern College are looking at. Health and wellbeing, I'm sorry, the writing's really little on this. So the health and wellbeing projects, again, it's quite a few projects in one area, one of them being a major investment up at the leisure centre, which, you know, Dennis has been very kindly working on, to deliver a new hydrotherapy pool. I think it's going to be really a regional centre, not just something for Stocksbridge or North Sheffield. It's going to be a really important facility. And if anybody's ever used a facility down at Rye Gate that's owned by the Children's Hospital, we did a little field trip by the towns fund board to go and have a look at that facility and got some really interesting feedback and good feedback about how this could develop. So the hydrotherapy pool is one of the projects, as well as further investment in Oxley Park, which will include a new skate park on the current skate park site, which is quite underused at the moment because the equipment's quite old now. So we're going to regenerate that area, a new 3G pitch on the plateau that you access through the, next to the Emmanphilean. So we're going to put a new 3G pitch on there because all the football and sporting clubs that use 3G pictures are going out of the town at the moment to use that. And, you know, that's a really nice facility that we can have in the community in Stocksbridge here. And other footpath work around the leisure centre. And one of the really key things in the health and wellbeing project is delivering a new trails and cycle network. And it's one of the most significant investments in the health and wellbeing area and it's going to link up footpaths much better and really build on that reputation of this part of our city being a real visitor area for walkers and cyclists. So Yorkshire Water are putting some investment into the link round the dam and the towns fund board are as well. And just to mention, anybody who does use Oxley Park, again, it's a very tiny little picture in a bubble at the top, but we had the opportunity to have some accelerated funding last year, year before last. And that work has now been completed. So that lovely park at the side of the leisure centre, which is really well used and looks amazing, was the first project to be delivered through the towns fund. And the next phase of what's happening at Oxley Park is really going to build on that. There's other investment in sporting facilities across Stocksbridge as well. So in terms of what happens next, we are putting the business cases to the towns fund board for sign off, hopefully on the 22nd of July. And after that, they can be submitted to the government once the council is happy and has also signed them off. They can then be submitted to the department for levelling up. In September, we may hear that we've got funding and if we do get that confirmation, we can, so we should get that confirmation in September, but the funding, if we get that confirmation in September, October, wouldn't drop until December. And then at that point, projects can start to be tendered. And one of the questions as a comms person that I'm always asking people is, when can we get on site? You know, we really want people to be able to see these projects starting now. And I think realistically, it's going to be spring next year before we actually see physical work, but things are heading in a really good direction. The total funding is £24.1 million. And if anybody wants to keep in touch, I do a regular e-newsletter. There is a website which I keep updated and we have social media channels. I don't have loads of followers, so please come and follow and do sign up for the newsletter because I do try and keep things updated. We put press out to the local newspaper, Look Local as well, and there was a little piece in today about a parking survey that we're undertaking. So I think I've sort of rattled through that a little bit, but it's a huge project and it's really got the potential to be transformational, I think, for Stocksbridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Is anyone, members of the public want to comment or?
I'd just like to know where the credit line we might get for doing this at that time.
We are working on that and we've had a couple of really good meetings in the last couple of weeks with potential temporary locations, because the library, you're right, it would have to close, but that won't be forgotten. The library team are very, very, and I know Julie as well, that's a key priority. And we're having all sorts of conversations with community groups. I'm talking to Valley and Bloom because do they order bulbs for the spring planting or not? Because we've started building work, so there is a lot of detail which I can assure you, we're really taking on board.
We can shout out, so, shout out, yeah.
I don't think I have to shout out, do you ever? Probably people here. The officers that are being, first of all, the library, who are all the people in there, what are they going to call?
So remember when we first started this project and we identified that we could do with some more, well, the towns fund board, I should say, identified that we could need some more town centre parking. And we looked at a piece of land at Liberty Steel and the potential for some connection up, up to the High Street. As you know, Dennis, we're not taking that. Yeah, so what we're doing at the moment is doing a full car parking survey of what's available in the town and what we can use to, for that parking, what's underused, what's well-used, where we could find some pockets of parking. So it is something that.
If you go to officers and people working there, you're going to want to park.
Yes, yeah, agreed. I mean, one of the town centre projects is aimed at marking the car parks out better. I mean, the car park behind Button Row isn't particularly well-lit or well-marked out and just looking at utilizing what we've got better. But I do hear what you say and we, yeah, we'll feed that back, yeah.
Any councillors want to come in? Stocksbridge councillors? You okay? Good presentation, Amanda, I know. Thank you very much.
Okay, so what we'd like to do is give a little bit of time to hear from you and before we have the public question section, which is the more sort of traditional thing which we will be doing, we'd like to have a bit of a breakout time, which is just an opportunity to hear your views, whether it's about the presentation you've just said specifically, if you're residents of the ward or you may have other views, if you're, other things you'd like to talk about, if you're from the wider area. So in order to do that, can I check, do we have people here from Stannington Ward? I suspected not. I know we have some people from Ecclesfield Ward for West and East. So what we're going to propose to do? Excellent, great, okay. So what we want to do is for you to be able to have a local conversation. So we're going to propose that folk from Stocksbridge and Upper conversation. So we're going to propose that folk from Stockbridge and Upper Don Ward stay in here. And Amanda and your ward councillors will have a few things to chat through to you about and just get your views. And then if you're from the other wards, I'm going to invite you to go through into the lobby where your local councillors will be. And we can just have, we'd love to hear your thoughts about whether these are facilities that you'd be interested in using. But if you have other local issues or other local suggestions, then you can have a more local conversation. So we're going to propose to do that for about 20 minutes till about 10 past seven. Then we'll come back together as we have been, and there'll be the opportunity to take and answer some public questions. We know we have a few already, and maybe other things that other people here would like to raise. So we'll take about 20 minutes. If you're from Stanington or Ecclesfield, I can invite you to go through into the lobby and we'll have a space. If you're from Stockbridge, stay here and you can talk further about what you just heard.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. I hope you found that useful. I think councillors did. And I'll ask Amanda, if she could, just give us some feedback on the Stockbridge. Are you ready? Right. Stockbridge Town Fund and Stockbridge, please.
We had a few suggestions with the Towns Fund. A very good suggestion about EV charging for bikes, because we have thought about actually car charging, electric car charging, but for bikes, if we're trying to make it a hub for cycling. So secure bike storage and charging. And somebody suggested we could use some funding at some point to turn this area into possibly a community cinema. The local plan, a local plan was mentioned. Parking up at the 3G pitch and making sure we manage that properly, which is something actually the Towns Fund Board are already actively discussing. Concerns outside the sort of Towns Fund sphere, concerns about new housing developments. And I know there's a lot of concern in the local community about that. Concerns about the street cleaning, could we make, could things look nicer and the streets be cleaner? Somebody suggested multi-storey car park. I don't know how that's going to go down in Stockbridge, but it's an interesting suggestion. And speeding, the junction at Hall House Lane and the problem with traffic getting out there seems to concern quite a few people. And I think that's it. Have I missed anything that we discussed? No? Have I covered it? Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. Thank you. I hope you all found it useful, anyway, coming and giving the presentation, helpful for the actual Town Fund itself, yeah.
Really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Has anyone else got any feedback from the other wards, Stanington, East and West Ecclesfield?
Yes. Yeah, thank you. In our discussions, we were with some of our constituents from outside of the Stockbridge and Upper Don Ward area. And what we were looking at, apart from talking about general issues within the wider north area, was what would be needed in order to attract people to use these facilities from outside of the Stockbridge Ward itself. And we did get some feedback around sports usage, that in order to diversify for hockey usage, if the specification on the pitch could be altered, there would be a market because we've got non-football based sports teams that are going way outside, you know, outside of Sheffield even, or right over to the other side of Sheffield to use facilities there. So there's an opportunity there to make a small tweak that could make a big difference.
With regard to that, we did look at when Thorncliff was refurbished and we got the artificial pitches up there. And apparently, the hockey pitches and the football pitches, it's a different surface and they're not compatible to stages. So it may be have to have a separate hockey pitch. But it just depends on what level you want to use these pitches for. But certainly during the Thorncliff lead up and the project, the Chapel Town Hockey Club were involved with that. Unfortunately, we weren't able to provide anything at Thorncliff for them.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, we had a very good and in-depth conversation with our resident from Stanington. Thank you for coming. Buses, buses and buses. The ongoing saga, I'm sure it's just as bad in Stockbridge and Ecclesfield. And as you see the headlines this week or the end of last week, it's not going to get better. I think the key thing is, the bus service needs to be reliable. It needs to be on time. And the lady was talking about the buses leaving early. To me, that should never happen. The bus driver should wait until his allotted time. So thank you for the conversation. Just a question for yourself, Amanda. Not Amanda. The resident suggested that a lot of people looked towards Sheffield rather than Stockbridge. Because one of the questions we were asking was, would you use your fantastic sounding facilities? The answer was not naturally looking, they wouldn't naturally look this way. So can I suggest or ask you that when you do your marketing, that you think about the communities nearer the city?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that's a really important point and a point to, this is the Stockbridge Towns Fund, but we want it to have a really positive impact for the whole, well, the whole of the city and obviously the north side of the city. I'm actually a Stanington resident and sort of obviously work in Stockbridge. So and I do actually, I do use the facilities in Stockbridge. And I know a lot of my neighbours do. They come shopping here, they use Fox Valley. And so they have become aware of Sheffield, of Stockbridge a little bit more since that's opened. And I think we can really expand on that and bring people out this way.
Thank you, Richard. Later in the meeting, I have got a question regarding buses from a resident at Grenicide. Mike?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. We had a really interesting discussion about the Grenicide Park development and what the opportunity is there. The team are putting a Facebook page together to show us exactly what it's going to look like. And it's clear that we can develop a master plan of sorts, not a proper master plan, but a master plan by which we can progress the project in various phases and look at funding opportunities, not just through the lack, but through the Walpott. And also with the parish council, because the parish council have worked jointly with us on the number of, this is Ecclesfield Parish Council, by the way, on the number of park-based projects, which we've managed to secure both the Angram Bank and we've got one at Charlton Brook going on. And we've recently done some work at the Little Park in Burn Cross. So parks is top of the agenda for us. And so we're going to work closely with the Grenicide team to get their plan into fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any more?
Chair, I noticed something. The South Pennine Community Transport Service are really excellent. They're a 26-foot thing which goes to Humpford and Roundwood Road, and a social support to Barnsley. And they're really good on time, not too frequent, but they're...
Yeah, maybe a few weeks ago, didn't you? You waiting for the bus? Yeah. And I think it's a very useful link. If you can get into Stockbridge, park the car and go wherever and come back, you spend a day out. Especially if you've got a bus pass, you can, yeah, you can travel, yeah. But I do notice the bus is waiting there at the bottom of the hill, ready to, ready and waiting, yeah. Looks a good service. Yeah, thank you. Okay, if we can move on then to public questions and petition. Before we do that, I would like to invite any members of the parish and town councils, if they have any updates for us. I know we've got one from Ecclesfield Parish Council. So Emma, could you come to the mic, please, and give an update on Ecclesfield Parish Council, please? If you introduce yourself first, then we'll go ahead.
Hello, everybody. My name's Emma and I work for Ecclesfield Parish Council as their community coordinator. So I'm just going to give a brief update as to what we've been getting on with recently in Ecclesfield Parish. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Is that better? Is that better? Can you hear me? So recently, last weekend, we did a community skip day at Angram Bank Park, encouraging residents to bring, obviously, the bigger rubbish that they were struggling to get rid of out of the homes, gardens and local area. And we got rid of over two tonnes of rubbish. So that was really successful. Obviously, over Jubilee weekends, we did an event at Grenicide Park and one at Chapel Town that saw over 2,000 people attend and everybody had a lovely time. At the end of July, we're having our school uniform swap shop open day, where people can come and pick up free uniform for schools across the parish, which works on a donation basis. So people bring their old uniform that's still wearable, and we hand it out to other parents that children are going through those schools completely free of charge. And that's always really successful. The community hall that's connected to our building, that's almost completed the refurbishment now, we're just waiting on the flooring and then that's going to be reopening. We've got some walk information posts going in across the parish in four different areas to start with that should be in place, ready for the summer holidays. So they've got little rubbings on and a little map and pointing out different things that you can see on your walks. And the Jeffcock Road survey and Angram Bank survey results, obviously, were published. The boulders have gone in, started going in now around Angram Bank Park to help prevent antisocial behaviour around there. And the Jeffcock Road survey results, which basically showed that people were worried about indiscriminate parking and different traffic issues, that's going to be discussed at the September council meeting. So yeah, that's what we've been doing at the moment. Okay.
Very much. Thank you. Is anyone from Stockbridge Town Council you'd like to?
I've already spoken on this thing and I really want to speak.
Okay. What I will be doing on future meetings and agendas, I will be having the parish and town councils a separate agenda item if they want to bring things to the local area committee, which I think will be useful to help develop a partnership between the area committee and the parish and town councils. Thank you. We can now move on then to public questions and petitions. How many petitions? We've received four written questions. And for those in attendance, I invite questioners to address the committee with their questions in turn. We will then deal with any other questions that anybody in the room have. I also have two questions that I will need to read out as the questioners aren't able to attend. So first of all, can I invite Emma to, with her question, please? And when I call you up, could you please use the microphone so we can all hear the question? Thank you, Emma.
Right. So with a different hat on now, I'm a resident of Chapel Town. And my children, I've got four children, one goes to Ecclesfield School, and the other three, the little three, go to Lound Academy, which, if you don't know, is a split site. So there's juniors is at one part of Chapel Town and then about five-minute walk away, there's the infant school. So I go, I do that walk every day, twice a day with my three little kids. And we lost our lollipop lady back in the last year, I think. I know, like, it was probably a little bit longer than that. And since then, obviously, it's a main road that divides the two. So if you're going from the juniors to the infants or back, it's a massive road. It's on the brow of a hill. It couldn't really be any more dangerous. And so since you're losing lollipop lady, and obviously, there's always traffic problems and parking problems, but it is so, so very dangerous. So as a member of our Lound Academy PTA, we recently asked the road safety team at Sheffield City Council for some no-waiting cones, just as like an interim, just to try and prevent, because it's a bigger ask for parents to like get out of the car to move the cone and then park, basically. And unfortunately, it came back for different reasons, but they basically said no. And one of them was a bit due to, because they were worried they were going to get complaints from the public. So my question really is threefold. Does the council department have any alternatives to offer if they say no to the traffic, no-waiting cones? My second question is, how many other complaints have they had about no-waiting cones for other schools across the Sheffield? And then my third question really is, which schools have had, actually had complaints? Because as a PTA, we'd really like to, like, get some background.
Thank you, Emma. Thank you. Emma, just stay there in case. We need to ask you for the question. You're not going to hear that, right? Yeah. It is one of our objectives on our plan, road safety and road safety around schools. It's an issue throughout Sheffield for schools. More and more parents are wanting to use the cars, for whatever reason, to get as near as schools to possible. Most of the schools have yellow lines and zigzags around the entrances. But unfortunately, parents don't seem to recognise that, despite, I think, a lot of activity and education from the schools themselves. We do have parking services, but it's a very, very limited service due to the number of officers they have. I'd like to pass this question on to... I'd like to pass this question on to councillor Woodcock, Alan Woodcock, who's been dealing with that and has met officers regarding this, but I would hope somewhere along the line that we can come to some compromise or some way that we can safeguard children going to school. It's, it's important. We don't want any accidents. We've had quite a few near misses in certain schools and whatever we can do to save accidents, we must do, it's, it's, we must do it. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Chair. The cost of providing these no-waiting cones, they're not legal for a start. They would just be there to emphasise the fact you shouldn't park there. I spent two mornings at the school from half past eight. No, people, zigzags, you name it, the far where they want. Lanside Junior School, which is where the main problem is, when they have an intake of new pupils, they have an open evening and they have to give a letter out and they also talk about please don't park outside the school. As Emma said, it's on a bend, it's on a hill, it's really bad. The cost to the school, which was to two schools, was in the region of about nine hundred pounds, yeah. That was, said no, there was a no-no to that. Emma's asked the questions, why? I met this morning with a senior technician from Highways to look at what else could be done. Some of the areas can't be done because there's a bus stop there, so we can't put anything up there, because bus pulls up, people can't get off the bus, that's that. So we measured up in an area we thought would sort of, yeah, they park, oh, the other bit we should have to tell you is that there's double white lines as well on this road in the centre. So from the law point of view, it means, yes, you can pull up, open the door, let the child get out and go, but they're not, I mean, I, like I said, I was there this morning at about twenty past eight, a car, car was already parked there and it was still there when I left with it, with this officer at ten o'clock, I think it was, half past nine. So we measured up this morning, an area that would go some way towards making it safer. It requires, I think Lewis can back me up on this, this area requires 14 bollards and to install a bollard is six hundred and fifty pounds. Is that right, Lewis? Roughly? No, no, that, that's, so that basically would be a no-no. They're looking at a barrier that would be 14 metres long and I can't remember what he said on the costing, but that would be something that I will bring when I get the costume to this lack. But I think, you know, it's all about education. I mean, the chair said about parking services, I've had the police there on quite a few occasions, but because of the brow of the hill, they can't stop people, you know, sort of speed or anything, there is nowhere to pull anyone over. They can't put the speed camera there, van there, because there's nowhere to park, they will get, you know, double white lines. So it, it's a major problem. I don't think it's just at this school. I think it's across, I mean, I've had conversations with, with Lewis about Stockbridge High. I think it's right across the city and the only way we're going to solve this is by doing some sort of enforcement and I don't know how we're going to do that. As, as the chair said, they're, they're very stretched for staff and if you ask them about coming out, not just about schools, because I think they intend to visit a school twice a year and they visit once at the beginning of the week and once at the end of the week. That's as much as they can do. Not their fault, there isn't enough of them and this is where we need to be going. So, you know, that's my take on, on the problems that Lanside School's got, but not just Lanside School, I think nearly every school in the city has this problem. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Julie?
Thank you, Chair. I, I'm the co-chair of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee, which deals with the school crossing wardens and I've been having conversations just, I've only recently taken up that post, just to find out exactly what is happening with them. And currently, we have 23 vacancies for school crossing wardens across the city that we just can't fill, so I'm assuming yours will be one of, one of those as well. So I think it, it's a plea to all of us, if we know anyone who would like a job, there are some really good jobs going, you know, helping in the local community if people have got the time and can do them. So it is something that I'm looking into because it is a concern that we, you know, we just don't seem to be able to employ people to take up the post at the moment, but we're all looking into it. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, yeah. I mean, and I've also been liaising with a lot of parents from, from the school and I'm just checking on my emails, we did have a price for this, for the barrier to go on Lanside and it's about fourteen hundred pounds and myself, Vic and Alan have all agreed over email that we're quite happy to put that as a cost that should come out of the, the lack budget. So I'm new to this lack, so I'm not sure what the pro, what the process should be, but I think that as all three of you ward councillors have, have given that the go-ahead, hopefully we'll get some movement on that pretty soon. I think we'll, I'll be having meetings with officers on the topic of bollards. I think people often accuse councillors of talking a load of bollards and when, when, when I got the quote back from Highways saying that to put a bollard in a particular part of my ward where there's another traffic problem, when it was going to cost six hundred and fifty pounds for one bollard, and, and my response was something along the line of bollards. On the topic of these vacancies for, for lollipop ladies, we've got this persistent problem that Julie's just alluded to. Part of the reason that, that we've not been able to fill those vacancies is because the crossing patrol lollipop men and ladies are only paid for less than an hour at the start and the end of each day. The market for those kind of jobs is exactly the kind of people who have not been able to get out of their homes because of Covid lockdown, people being clinically vulnerable and, and quite wary of Covid transmission. Now we're emerging from that, we may be in a position to, to move. Before I was elected to the city council, I did raise with officers the prospect of, of re-advertising those jobs, because when I looked on the job adverts, I, I noticed a few things, because they've been advert, they're, the adverts are still out there in the live, but as, as people in the job market will know, the longer a job has been advertised for, the, the further down the, the results it goes. The other thing is because we were advertising for what, 20, 20 different vacancies, if you're looking for a job around Ecclesfield, it won't necessarily come up because it's, it's bundled in with all of these other geographical jobs. So I, I think there's a strong case for, so I raised it with an officer before I was elected. Sometimes, you know, we find it difficult to get traction as elected members of the city council and certainly before you get elected, you know, you've got pretty much no chance, but I think that's something we can push again to see if we can attract some interest now that things have moved on a little bit.
Thank you, Craig. Very quickly, I want to come back in, please.
Yeah. The barrier at fourteen hundred pound I was selling this morning can't happen. This is based on visiting with the officer this morning, it can't happen. He's recosted on that one, which I thought, obviously I didn't make that plain enough when I spoke earlier. And on the crossing patrols, Emma drew up a advert that Emma and myself went round and stuck up all over the place in Chapel Town, Ecclesfield, all over. I mean, I think just in my ward, well, in our ward, four, I think there's four vacancies in East Ecclesfield. That's, you know, and one of them's been at it for over two years. I think there's been a vacancy there over two years. Like Craig said, you know, it's not a job that people really want anymore because they don't pay enough. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, yeah. I, I think as we realise, I mean, it's a very sort of confused situation which we're working on, we're working on. If I could say that, I think the perhaps best way to deal with, and Dave's been doing some work as well as area manager, if we can have some time before we give you a sort of a conclusive answer and perhaps bring this back to the October meeting, which is not very far away, let the officers and the councillors do the work. If we can't come up with a solution, then we will have to look at alternative issues perhaps, escalating it to head of Highways and, or Julie, sending it to your committee. So I think we'll, we'll let the officers and the councillors do the work first, if, if that's agreeable, and then you can feed that back to the Parent Teachers Association, yeah, and we'll keep you informed of progress. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, well, thank, thank you. Two very quick questions. Do you want me to ask both questions at the same time, Mike?
If you ask the first one first, then we'll answer that and then go on to the other. Keep them separate.
Can you just remind me which the first one was?
Stain Drop Lodge.
Oh, yeah. Right, yes. When I ask the question, I think one of the things I want to emphasise is, one of the reasons I'm asking this question is, we had been doing a bit of door-knocking and leafletting in the area and there is a bit of history around changing uses of Stain Drop Lodge. What I'd like to really emphasise on this one is we did have a number of people who actually knew me from, basically from door-knocking in the election campaigns. They are very, very sympathetic to the plight of the people who are currently being accommodated in Stain Drop Lodge, because I think, and I would want to emphasise, our concerns are about how the decision was made to use it for asylum seekers and whether or not this was like the previous change of use was something that was actually decided somewhere else, not by the council and, and just done in the area. I think the concern and the examples I got were, there's a lot of children living there and we're a long way from any facilities that are there to, to help these people. And I also heard one or two comments about some of the local residents went actually with toys and things for the kids who were living there and I think some of the security guards or the people or the staff were somewhat less than friendly to local people who were trying to, you know, basically, particularly with what's going on in Ukraine, we get that we need places in a hurry for people with, you know, for asylum seekers. So the main question I would have was, are people on this committee aware of who and how the decision was made? Because it did go back to being a hotel for a short while.
Have you got the question there?
I, I hope it's at home, I'm afraid.
I, I need to read the question out to the, to the councillors. I mean, they can't answer the question that you've raised.
Okay, yeah. Could you read?
I will do, yeah. Could the committee inform me of what, of when and how the decision for the Stain Drop Lodge Hotel to be allocated for use for asylum seekers was made? A, the extent to which the council was informed and whether the change of use was subject to planning regulations? B, any consultation with local residents? And C, what support is being offered to people currently resident at Stain Drop Lodge? That was your question.
That was the question, yes, thank you, yeah. So, and I've given you the background to it as well, so.
Thank you very much. I'll hand this over to councillor Matt Leverie, who's been dealing with this along with myself and the other West Ecclesfield councillor, Anne Whittaker. Mike, if you could respond, please.
Thanks, Chair. A little bit of background for those people who aren't aware, Stain Drop Lodge is privately owned and about three years ago, in the height of the Covid pandemic, when the government moved to get rough sleepers off the streets, Stain Drop Lodge was put forward to house rough sleepers. There were a lot of problems with the immediate neighbours, the immediate residents throughout that period of about 19 months they were there and the councillors worked hard to actually get the rough sleepers moved through, other accommodation found and by June last year, the hotel was cleared. It was put into operation on a short-term lease with the Manchester Company and it returned to be in a hotel, both in terms of offering beds and restaurants as well. We were informed in mid-May by local council officers that the hotel was being used, proposed to be used for alternative use for asylum seekers. The request came from the Home Office, the Home Office are responsible for this. The council objected in writing to the Home Office as not being a suitable place for asylum seekers because most of their needs need to be in the city centre where they can do the applications they need to do the asylum. They were, there was no response from the Home Office and they moved forward with appointing a contractor called Mears to, to take over the hotel and start operating with it for asylum seekers from the end of May. Because the council have no control over this, all we can do is deal with the statutory obligations in terms of children that are in there and placing in schools. There's no funding to the council for doing this sort of work. The Home Office are accountable, Mears are the operator and they do not actually put out press releases about what's happening in hotels. So the local councillors, I stepped forward and put a press release to the Star and to look local in late May to say exactly what was happening so people were aware because rumours were going around about what it was and what wasn't being used for. Since then, we've had meetings with the Home Office. There are a number of children in there, forty-odd kids, and it's incumbent on the council to find school places for them, whether they be secondary age or primary age, and that process is going on at the moment. A lot of the asylum seekers have been, have been moved from elsewhere, from other parts of the country and they are in the main Kurdish, Syrian Kurds and Iraqi Kurds. There are, there's no triaging of, for example, religious types before they were put together and it is a 36-bed hotel and it takes up to 140 people within the hotel and I think currently the occupancy is about 120, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's going up all the time. This all happened very quickly. I wrote to Miriam Cakes about it and asked what action she was taking because this is a Home Office decision and the hotel is not suitable with its location for housing asylum seekers. Once I got the press release out, I did get an answer that she'd written to the Home Office and would get back to me with a response. I'm still waiting, that's five weeks on from, from when that took place. So basically, the council are picking up the pieces around this decision. We are looking to have a meeting again with the Home Office very soon, once again to raise our concerns about this, this decision. There is no time limit, it's open-ended. It doesn't take Ukraine or Ukrainian or Afghan asylum seekers, they are all dealt with under separate government schemes. This is for all the rest who are coming to our shores and seeking asylum. One of the problems we have, of course, is it may well be that we get these kids into local schools and very soon if their application is accepted and they get refugee status, they may well move on and more come along. So we're looking at this scenario of families coming along, more kids arriving, placing in the schools, moving on, and we don't know when it will stop. So we're waiting for a date. We've written again to the Home Office with our concerns about what's happening in the, in the actual hotel. There has been an environmental survey done inside by the, by the council officers and some issues have been raised from that. And also, it's quite right, there are security guards on the, outside the hotel and even we as councillors are not given access. So nobody's given access, even those who might want to help or offer to do, provide clothing or whatever. These people have got, you know, we've been doing some work, I'm going to say a bit in a minute, in provision of clothes and things and getting that into, these residents, these asylum seekers have come in the clothes they stand up in. That's it. And no provision made by the Home Office for, for additional clothing or anything like that. So we're trying to work around that and get as much done as we possibly can to support them. And I want to give you a few more details, but that's where this whole issue's come from. Thank you. Thank you.
Want to quickly comment?
I've had a lot of dealings with this as a councillor, and more to the point as a human being, because I can see that the difficulties that there are there. A charity that was on board, who's worked with asylum seekers for the last three years in the city, and they were on board right from before the asylum seekers arrived, and they were collecting all sorts of clothing, toys, books, you name it. They have not been allowed access on the premises. I've witnessed some awful behaviour from the security staff. Council officers are working really hard despite only being able to offer, do the statutory stuff. You know, I think some of them have gone above that, because, you know, they're dealing with it as a human being, and it is something that we're constantly ongoing with, so we have to arrange to meet residents off-site somewhere, which is difficult. Members of the public have turned up there and they've been turned away in no uncertain terms. The company that are looking after, supposedly looking after them, they have all sorts of reasons, that it's for safety of the children, it's for safeguarding, it's for this, it's for that. But I think somebody said to me a while ago that although they're caring for these families in terms of them providing a roof over their head and food, they're not actually caring about them, and I think they are two different things, and I think that's certainly a true statement. But it's something that, you know, that is ongoing and, you know, something that I'm doing a lot of work on at the moment, so, you know, we'll see how things go. But they know it's not an ideal location for them. I mean, as councillor Levy said, that there are people from Iraq, Iran, Sudan, Syria, and I think even, well, there's a couple there who I don't know whether they're from the Philippines or something like that, or China or something like that. People are coming and going constantly. The hotel's getting more and more full. You know, you've got situations where you've got four adults in a room, you know, all from the one family, things like that. So it's a very sort of closed environment, they're not allowed to use any of the communal room, the event rooms that we know are at Stain Drop. So it's not a good situation, but it's something that we are working on. And the public, you know, obviously there's lots of people out there who would like to give support, but that's very difficult to happen at the moment, so, yeah. Thank you.
The asylum seekers are actually in the hotel, are families with children, and there's no single males in there. And is working on behalf of both councillor Ollie and myself, a meeting with the council on a regular basis with MERS, and I say, hopefully we can get another meeting with the Home Office people. And finally, I would like to add that Sheffield is a city of sanctuary. We need to be working with them and accepting asylum seekers wherever possible, and I would say that needs to be in the appropriate place and looked after properly. But it is an issue. Thank you. Is that okay? Second question now, please.
Yeah, I'm afraid I had a printer malfunction before I came out, so I couldn't print off my questions, I thought they'd be on the agenda, so do you want to read it out and then I'll make any difference?
I'll briefly read it out, Adam. It's a longstanding question, I think, which most of the committee members will be aware of. You visited the full council in March, you visited, the week after you visited, the North Lack Committee at High Green, brought the question up. You then went to the cooperative executive on the twentieth of April and raised the question, and now it's back with us. Paul Wood responded at the executive, saying that the relevant paperwork had not been located and would, a meeting would be arranged with the relevant officers and yourselves in due course. I don't know who yourselves are, but can you inform me of what progress has been made since April the twentieth? So, I think there's been some confusion. There was a letter sent out, but the construction traffic did not use Mortimer Close, which is the unadopted highway, they used Packhorse Lane. Initially, they thought they would have to use Mortimer Close because of the excavation work and contractors using that access to Thorncliff Park for the St George's footballing. That didn't happen. Images were taken before and after the project, and these images showed there was no visible wear was shown on the afterimages. This issue was not raised in early sixteen on completion of the project, but raised by itself some six years later. No doubt in them six years, there has been some deterioration in the unadopted road. The case is still under investigation. We did meet with a council officer from the project and the cooperative executive member at that time in April, who's no longer with the council, she was a finance officer. The case is still in investigation, and upon conclusion, the lack will provide you with a written reply to your question. Paul Wood stated that all the relevant project paperwork had been located. As today, I have an email and a telephone conversation with the officer concerned, and all the project paperwork has not been located as yet. So we're still looking for the project paperwork with this, and there are, it's down now to legal implications as well. So as and when this is concluded, I will, and the like will answer your question.
Just one thing, I think the additional question that we raised when we went to the cooperative executive was a couple of people on Mortimer Close had actually sent us copies of letters from, I think it was Steve Barnes, and if you look at the minutes, saying that, I think the words were, the promise was actually made that the road would be resurfaced, and we'd asked, at what stage, when it was decided not to resurface the road, were the people who'd received those letters promising it told that the situation had changed? And I think that's the bit that we're wanting to focus on. Now, I do appreciate this is probably something that has to be asked as much of the city councillors here, but we did want to make sure, you know, we don't want to leave that. A promise was made, we've seen a letter saying that the road would be resurfaced. We didn't see any evidence of any written communication to the residents on Mortimer Close saying that, you know, that situation had changed and that's what we were seeking.
Yep. The office concerned was Barnes, yeah, it was James Barnes. I don't wish to provide any further comments, it is a legal matter. Thank you.
Before I do go, I would just like to say thank you for your response on the asylum seekers and Stain Drop. I think it was really for information, and I won't say it's reassuring, but we're with you on this one.
Thank you, thank you very much. I've got two questions from members, the general public to read out, they can't be here today for various reasons. The first one is relating to Jeffcott Road and a request at one of our previous meetings for a safety gate through barrier leading out of Mortimer Park, High Green, onto Jeffcott Road. It's a footpath that leads out of the park directly onto the road. At that particular point, as it meets the road, there is no footpath at all, so the path opens up directly onto the road. There's no provision or use for a barrier to be put there, but it was Sheffield Homes, the land and the path is Sheffield Homes. It's not parks, we thought at first it was parks, so it's took some time, but it is Sheffield Homes, and this has been ongoing for some months now. I met on-site earlier this year, quite earlier this year, with officers from Sheffield Homes who, because of the length of time, these have subsequently retired, so we're dealing with new people, but it's going on and on, and I think I would wish, if we can't get an answer within the next week or fortnight, that I escalate this up through the council system. This chap's been very obliging, phoning me up, I've tried to do what I can, but I've not been able to move it on. So I hope within the next fortnight, if this hasn't been in place, I will escalate it up. So that will be our reply to, it's a Mister Wynn, James Wynn of Jeffcott Road. The second one is, as Richard alluded to earlier, buses. It's a Greenwich Side resident who asked, unfortunately, I cannot make the meeting and do not drive, but please could a suggestion be put on my behalf? I live at Greenwich Side where the bus service is deteriorating at a rapid rate to the point where many older people are not going out and becoming semi-housebound. The 135 is so infrequent and unreliable, people avoid it. The 86 is more reliable and regular, but has a long torturous route and does not connect with tram or other bus services. The M92 is reliable and goes directly to the Intouch Road side, making connections possible. However, there are only four a day with timing gaps of two hours, ten minutes, and only in the middle of day. Yet in spite of its lack of frequency, it is the busiest bus. Suggestion is, what we need is a shuttle service directly to Hillsborough Interchange, possibly our way, a smaller bus like the M92 would be adequate. I feel very strongly that should be considered, seriously considered, thank you. It was from a Greenwich Side resident. So we've already had the issue about buses. The latest information from, about buses is that the 135, which the lady speaks about here, is being drastically reduced in a fortnight's time. It's the first of the bus cuts that's happening. The 135, 135A is going to be reduced to just a Monday to Friday service, no Saturday or Sunday service. The early morning buses will be ceased and the evening buses will be ceased. So that's the 135. And the 135 runs from Sheffield to Hillsborough Interchange, Foxhill, Greenwich Side, High Green, Chapel Town and through to Rotherham. And during this first tranche of buses, Rotherham seems to be heavily hit. The other bus service in the north of Sheffield, not quite in our lack area, is the 32 bus that runs across Parsons Cross and Foxhill, and that's been ceased altogether as from a fortnight's time. The next tranche of cuts will be, they're talking about one in three buses going, will be in October, so we await that, we await that. I will reply to the residents who's sent this in and try to get this in either to the South Yorkshire Mayor Authority and/or the Transport and Highways Committee. No doubt they'll be receiving many questions and comments regarding the cutting bus services. I thought you wanted to comment too late, thank you. So that's just an individual, and I think we in the north will suffer greater because of the distances of our communities. We've got, yeah, you've got Stanington, Stockbridge, High Green, Greenwich Side and Chapel Town and all the outlying villages. The north, like, and I've said this for a long time, covers virtually geographically half of Sheffield. So, yeah, we're not going to get half the Sheffield buses because we have a lot of population, but we do need buses of some sort or other. And again, transport and issues are, was one of our themes and objectives, about rural connectivity, digital connectivity, we need to look after our residents. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's really important that we have reasonable bus services in the north of the city, across the north of the city, so many people rely on them. If you've not been to Stockbridge before, when you've driven along the High Street tonight, you can understand why we will need a reasonable bus service, just in terms of getting back up the hill to get home. It's a big enough job on its own, and it's quite difficult even on a lovely evening like tonight. Unfortunately, the South Yorkshire Mayor Combined Authority put in a bid for buses and were wanting to receive monies from the government. That money was turned down recently, so we knew at that point that we would be in a situation where when the government grants to the bus company stops in October time, that there will be cuts to buses. So we knew that cuts to buses would be coming in October. What we weren't aware of was the fact that some would be coming, the ones that the chairman's just mentioned, in the end of July. So this has been a real bolt out of the blue for us. We had a meeting as the Transport Committee, all members of the committee yesterday, we met with the mayor and his team to discuss this, to look at a plan for the way forward. There is other funding available that we are applying for, but that is not going to, even if successful, that's not going to deal with the immediate problem of what is happening with the buses now, unfortunately. So we are just stuck in an absolutely dreadful place where we know as a like, it was the priority that came out from all of you when we did the consultation with the public last year. So we know, you know, how important the bus service is, and we will just continue the fight to try and get the money that the bus services need. Unfortunately, the services that are all being cut or reduced in July belong to First, they're all First Bus Services. First, I've just said, we're not running them anymore. This is not a council issue, it's to do with the Combined Authority. They can't make them run the services. They have put them all back out for tender to try and get other bus companies to run these services. No one is tendering for them, nobody wants to run them. So we're just in a really difficult place at the moment, but we are working as a local authority really hard with the Combined Authority and the mayor to see what we can do, because we do appreciate that, you know, this is serious and it's important for so many people. I think across the city, one in five bus journeys is to get to a medical appointment. You know, that is pretty serious.
Thanks, Julie. I think for us, it just washes space, and I think we need as a like, if we can, to look at what we can do to try and help the situation along, but it doesn't look very promising. Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to expand a little bit on what Julie just quite rightly said. I was at the committee's briefing with the mayor's team yesterday, and really the extent of the withdrawal of investment in our entire region's bus infrastructure is absolutely shocking. And I think that the discussions that we've had here this evening draw that into sharp relief, because we've seen this brilliant amount of progress that we're able to potentially make through the Towns Fund, where the figure that was mentioned was £24.1 million. Now, to put that into context, when we look at the buses, because we can't level up South Yorkshire and South Yorkshire's economy unless people can get from one place to another, particularly when you look at the rural nature of our communities. Now, the reason that we're in this pickle is because the mayoral authority put in a bid to the government for a bus improvement fund. The bid that was put forward was for a total of £400 million. That's what we needed for the next three years to maintain our public transport network and the routes and the buses and the frequency, and improve them over the next three years. So, and it's central government that have pulled the plug on that. Where West Yorkshire Mayoral Combined Authority were granted £75 million, Greater Manchester Mayoral Authority got £95 million, what we needed for our region was £400 million, and we got turned down zero. So let's compare £400 million that we've been denied with the £24.1 million that we're looking at for the Town Fund. We're grateful for the Town Fund because we can see the impact it can make, but we shouldn't be put in a position where we're grateful for the scraps off the table. We need proper, we need proper funding, and we need the government to put its money where its mouth is.
I'll be brief, thanks, Chair. Sorry, Chair, I'll be very brief. Obviously, I agree with many of the comments that have already been made about the risk of buses being lost. Obviously, those comments have to be put in some context, and I think Craig sort of mentioned this slightly, some neighbouring authorities did receive funding from the government, and I think people will draw their own conclusions from that, in that what I hear from bus operators and those leading bus companies is that the bid put forward by the South Yorkshire Mayoral Combined Authority combined authority just wasn't that ambitious, it wasn't grounded evidence, and that's why I think we need to reflect on that. Now we've got a new South Yorkshire mayor, which hopefully will bring, you know, the opportunity for some positive change in putting forward a more ambitious and more grounded bid forward. But it is, you know, quite apparent that, you know, other neighbouring authorities did receive this money from the government and South Yorkshire. And my conclusion from that is that the bid itself just wasn't that good.
Have you seen the?
Yes.
Very quickly, Mike, if you would please, and then we'll close the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. I'd like to have another take on what's been said about buses. There's been, through the reductions, a complete imbalance of services across this city. So if you live in Ecclesfield and you want to go to town, you have a choice of bus services. If you live in High Green and you work in Hillsborough and you have the 135 bus to rely on, you can't get home. That's the reality of the situation. We've got a complete imbalance of services. High Green has just one service, a number one, and a part-time 135 for a community of, a large community of people, and the number one is unreliable. So we've ended up in a situation where parts of the city have got a dreadful service, and large communities as well, and other parts have got more buses than they can deal with, running empty. This is absolutely ludicrous, and there's been no remodelling done at all over many years of what services go where and are we serving the needs of the communities in this city, and it's about time it took place. Thanks, Chair.
Could go on, I'm fine with buses, but we have overrun, it's the first one I have overrun, I thought we were going to be finished early, but we've overrun, but I think the buses are important and the subjects that we've been questioned about are important. Thank you for your questions. Thank you all for attending. The sun's still shining, so, thank you. The next meeting will be hopefully in East Ecclesfield, it's been Ecclesfield Primary School on the fifth of October. Thank you very much, thank you. Safety journey home, everyone.